Okay, it's 6:08, and we'll call for the order. The first one on the agenda is some questions or comments from the floor. Questions or comments on the floor?
Hi, do you have a vote?
Okay, the first one on the agenda is President and the senior. Foodborne Senior will be for celebrating our program. Lindsey Hahn, probably doing that. Tom O'Neal. And we would like to take a motion to present the agenda. Oh, Chris. Oh, Chris.
No, that's right.
Sorry, I'm glad to find out. Okay, the board of the senior. Okay, any questions or discussion? Is it done? I would like to vote on the favor. Vote.
Hi, do you have a vote?
Aye.
You have my personal. Again, I would ask for reconsidering the agenda. Second. On paper. Okay, so the two cost biker, some people will have a tire. And we are very late. Any questions on that? Reservation. That would be Kim Sullivan Jr., who has the, uh, that is unable to be kind of like an academic. This is a, uh, John. Um, any questions there? And another reservation is, uh, Farley Beadrick. That is for just J D Sartor, who had a, uh, sign up. And we'll point spring coaches. We have a high five track midfield, which is Mary Anna Holden. And high five softball, probably the next. Any questions there? Okay. On the tractor updates. You want to read through those or? These are all, we discussed that. Any questions? If you want to take a minute to read them. Okay, so questions or comments on this? All right. And we actually, that's a question, is L A A testing, right? Does it? Does it? Aye. Okay. Okay, and now the, uh, Stephen Haller. The district board, please state your suggestions. Presenting for his best. Presenting there. I would ask for a vote on all of the personnel at service center. On paper. Vote. Vote.
Hi, do you have a vote?
Yes. Aye. You're welcome.
I would ask for a motion to recess.
Motion.
On paper. Okay, you are in recess.
Tendibility, community involvement, creativity, courage, creativity, engagement, perseverance, respect, and tolerance. As we look at the overview of our budget, what's some of the goals to kind of just focus on? Well, it's maintain and enhance programs for students, which we've done. Keep the tax cut to the minimum, which we've definitely done. Maintain jobs and enhance jobs, bring to the federal funds. Create a robust remediation program for students, and that in the LA, social emotional supports. They catch up, you know, with students who are suffering in terms of learning loss, as they keep saying, the Lord's learning loss. And ensure that the district will be financially solid in the future. So you also got some good news for the downtown as well. Uh, so I think we put together a budget and some futuristic, uh, thought process in terms of reserves and things of that nature to put ourselves in a good position. And continue progress with our reopening plan. We still don't know what that's going to look like come September. Uh, there's some, there have not been direct guidance, uh, in terms of too many changes at this point. And we'll just kind of have to wait and see like the ad hoc year. Uh, you know, I think some of the biggest things are vaccines for twelve-year-olds and up. And I think the ability to quarantine differently. That is a big piece. Those are two pieces that kind of hamstring us a little bit. Um, we have to go to three feet, and we have still have to quarantine every six feet. That turns into a whole new ballgame in terms of how many people we have to quarantine. We had a case yesterday where we had quarantined twenty students, and that does have to do with students who are six feet away. So you can imagine what that will do with this three feet. So there's a lot of, you know, still unanswered questions, and we'll take a look at that as a group. Uh, 2021 to 2020 proposed budget activities, um, achieved all goals, I think. You know, our programs and opportunities have been enhanced. We proposed a tax increase of zero percent. Our current proposal maintains an increase of job opportunities. And just to go back from the, uh, zero percent, there are some school districts that are going out at a minus. And some school districts are going out of a zero, but their tax gap is actually a minus. So they're asking for a supermajor vote to go up for zero. Uh, so it's, it's an interesting economy this year of different things that are going on in the budgets. Um, keep reserve and fund balance, those offset future expenditures and normal operating budget. And it keeps students in fact and state, uh, obviously with regards to COVID-19. So looking at the overview. Foundation aid, 2019, 20, 2021, pretty much stayed solid at nine million dollars. A decrease in some categories, but it looks like we got most of that back. 2021, 22 saw an increase. Uh, but some of that is a little misleading because of the community of Grant Detroit, Leah. Community size, a hundred thousand dollars that they pulled out of other runs. So it was about a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollar decrease overall. But better, obviously, than we've seen the last two years with some promises of a less three percent in the next two years at least. Our stimulus funds, uh, we have two, uh, two stimulus acts. One came at one point two million dollars, and one came in at just about two point five million dollars. Uh, still not sure how that money is going to be spent. We're still waiting for clarification. Uh, we will talk to state planning again next week if we don't get any more clarification and see where it's going forward. Uh, some people say, don't ask too many questions. Uh, because, uh, you don't want too many answers, right? And you just go forward, they give you the money, they give you a little bit of guidance and, and take care of it from there. But we're, we're going to reach out to state planning again if nothing comes forward in terms of, uh, of funds. We have the auditorium this week, just a little sidebar, as our audit's going through. I was talking to her yesterday, and she asked the same thing, and she says, we don't even know what's included in some of that, uh, you know, in terms of, of what you have to do. We do know about twenty-five percent, and we have to put in for recruiting costs, remediation, um, summer school programs, after-schools programs, expenses, and social emotional supports. Which we put together a budget for that. And again, recruit costs and additional costs associated with the pandemic. We don't know what's going to happen next year, we might, you know, we might have to keep to the elementary level, for example, very similar to what it's, what it is, depending on what happens in terms of, uh, you know, the rules or regulations changes. So we'll have to see what that looks like, hopefully, with a guide soon enough. And again, position the district for the future. So planning for the future, we, uh, we have our ERS reserve, we plan on continuing to fund that anymore. We have a TRS reserve, which is a subcomponent of the ERS, uh, very minimal, but it's another reserve force of about a hundred fifteen, hundred seventeen thousand dollars. We're going to create an equivalent reserve that will be voted on by the, uh, uh, by the community in the budget vote. And that equivalent reserve will help us offset, uh, you know, line item expenses that come up, like a truck, equipment, furniture, things of that nature, or dishwasher for, for the, uh, uh, for the cafeteria, things, things like that. So you don't have to take that out of our regular fund budget. Capital building projects, we had a capital building project meeting the other day, with a facilities meeting, a facilities committee, and we're looking to do about a four million dollar project. So if we want to build our capital reserve up a little bit to meet that, it's a bill of taxpayer impact. And then there's a fund balance as well. We want to still keep the healthy fund balance, even though the state didn't move off the four percent, they stayed at the four percent. But four percent for us is nine hundred something thousand dollars, and we know if we have two or three, uh, students moving in our district that we have to provide services for, and the roof caves in, their nine hundred thousand dollars is gone. So we have to be very careful on how we have that funded. And then maintain other areas of budget with minimal increases. Uh, we have a bunch of new hires, we have some hires that can do with the federal grants. Uh, so there'll be a lot of, of that as well. Uh, we have, uh, some areas that to look at in terms of, uh, of, of making sure we get all the applicants. Uh, applicants are pretty solid in a lot of positions, struggling a little bit in the science conditions, we kind of expected that a little bit. Uh, another area that we were looking at, and we'll just kind of discuss it tonight a little bit, and kind of let the finance committee know a couple weeks ago, and put it in your board practice, uh, the week before. After we had a kind of late addition return in, in the elementary school, in the library. Uh, we had an A.D. retire who was at kind of the top step. So what we looked at, after we looked at salary, on that institution, how much does that, how much will it cost to hire a new library media specialist, for example? A library media specialist gives you obviously a couple advantages, gives you the certification in the position, and it also gives you commitment to somebody with a strong technology background. Uh, obviously, we just talked with Chris, technology has definitely exploded in our district, and anything we can do to get extra support. Just a thought process, we didn't know that this person was going to retire, so it's something we can throw out there if we want to entertain that. Don't have to, but you know, we can, and thought because of the price kind of difference in terms of eleven thousand dollar increase, we might want to take a look at that position. So without kind of further ado, in fact, we want to speak to that a little bit in terms of how we want to move forward or not move forward with that. And again, last night retirement, took a look at it and said, you know what? We're not too far off here if we want to keep that position, so.
So is that eleven thousand dollars, an increase over what the retiring would be? Or is that eleven thousand dollars over what the breakage rate would be for everything?
It's over the retirement. Over the retirement. So Scott, coming back to some of the comments, if we, if we hired a new A.D., for example, that way it can be less than, you know, the salary that we currently have. So it could swing either way, type of a thing. Uh, but I felt we were, you know, kind of close, we're, we might want to take a look at that. Again, we don't have to, it's just, you know, if something comes on late, do we take advantage of the situation or not?
Um, I was just wondering, could you or Chris address what the significance of that change would be in terms of the library services to our students?
At least you do.
It would, uh, we made, when we brought Miss Goldman, um, um, as the six-eight library media specialist, as well as technology coordinator, uh, excuse me, for our district tech integration. Um, the middle school had basically lacked in the type of continuity for elementary school to high school as it relates to any type of library services. We had Miss Jones in charge of the high school, providing those, you know, very technical type of opportunities. And we had this left at the elementary school, it was providing a library class all through year six. So that would reestablish that continuum that has disappeared. As Dr. Charles said, you know, as in the midst of COVID, we also became a, you know, a one-to-one, um, school district. Having another person that is versed in technology, if they have a new library media, if they actually do, you know, something, you know, has PD and things like that, much like Miss Goldman does, would be invaluable to the district. Just because that is, you know, a shift that I want to see there.
Yeah, no. And Chris and I also discussed, um, possibly taking the whole computer lab in the library that we had, it was a traditional computer lab, but now that we have one-to-one, we don't need to use it. And we talked about using that, um, space for more of a scheme space for like, uh, students to do more science-based things with technology. And so that person, that would be nice to have that person to be able to, that use that, utilize that room and utilize it for, um, exploration and, um, projects, let's do this.
And then some of the, some of the robotics, we definitely start in the middle school, some of the, uh, this year with the early class coming to sixth grade. That coding actually will only down to four, I believe, on that platform. Um, and some of the Lego robotics, and Lego's actually reviewing the robotics on where you have, a lot of that adheres to that upper elementary, three to five, not necessarily just starting. So it'd be an opportunity to, you know, to provide, to continue that library, but also, you know, maybe reimagine that, that ex-computer space into something else that is more student-based.
Any other questions or comments? So is it something that we want to consider or?
Yeah, I think we need time.
Yes.
So I think what changed too is the, is the library of special positions, right? You know, a library was fifteen years ago, a library is now, has changed, and we want to kind of change with that. Does that kind of make a little sense? You know, we've done that at the middle school a little bit, we've definitely done that at the high school a little bit. And Lauren's kind of more, she's district, but she's working a lot up here in a lot of middle schools, so this is kind of giving us another, you know, we're not looking for somebody, obviously, like our crew, who's going to take over technology, but they can handle, you know, working with, you know, the other things that pop up with computers or smart work, things of that nature that can help us out a little bit down there, that will be an added plus for us.
So this is for the elementary?
Correct. So we don't have a library specialist right now.
What's going to happen with the rule?
No, so Doris, Doris was in the library, but Doris, but Doris went to A I S this past year. So with the schedule being the way it is, we, I advised Michelle there to do, um, social emotional learning, paid guide in the library. And then there was a need there to do the book exchange. So if, if we, if there was just a need, we hired, that it would just be, you'd be going to the library just basically to do a book exchange.
And Doris wasn't a library specialist.
No, Doris was just, uh, an elementary teacher. So, um, so really then, there wouldn't be a teacher or, um, a library media specialist within the library, it would just be that A.D. running and taking out books with the students.
I guess, I misunderstood the first part of the conversation in the office was to, uh, man the middle school and do a bridge from elementary to middle, and we just separated it in elementary.
Yeah, no, the bridge I was talking about was just how, right now, we had, when we brought Miss Goldman, it was to create that bridge from elementary to high school. Now, without a library media or this, we didn't have the elementary school, so there, there's no one in that position now. So Miss Holtz was in there as, as an aide for, for book exchange, book checkout, things like that. But there's actually not, there's no one doing any type of instruction, instruction as a, out of the library with technology, with library, or anything like that. So I think that's what this suggestion would be, replacing would be, as Miss Holtz is retiring, bringing, rather than bringing A.D. back to that position, which, well, that's what we can do from it. Bringing a certified library media specialist there that can not only be a catalyst for, for bringing classrooms in, helping with technology, and will check out things like that, but also will be the driving force for expanding the technology access in the elementary school. It'd be fantastic if, you know, we push down some basic keyboarding classes and things like that to first, second grade, third grade, as these students are starting to get these devices, um, to support that. And I think that would, you know, I think that would be a fantastic opportunity to, to build those baseline skills, rather than building them in, you know, sixth grade, which this year, this is the problem, you know, isn't a problem, but in the future, it's going to prepare those kids at a younger age, going to be ready, also, I'll, I'll contribute to the whole plan.
So how is it going to happen in the middle school?
Nothing changes in this school, but we still have Miss Holtz. So we still have, she is responsible for six, seven, eight, six, seven, and eighth grade library, and she is still continuing to do tech integration, which she does now. It will give us a second person based at the elementary school, it would, I would assume, do a similar role, be a trench in the elementary school for increased tech integration, and be library media specialist.
And who would the first person be in the elementary? There isn't a first person, okay.
Person for what, sorry?
Okay, I misunderstood, I understand what you're saying, who would be the second person in addition to the middle school?
Correct, so, so right now, Miss Goldman, in her two-thirds of the day, covers K-12 in terms of tech integration support and training and things like that. This would, whether we, they both became K-12, or Miss Goldman, you know, focused on six, twelve, and this person focused on K-six, I think, or K-five, excuse me, it would just work out there.
Both sort of progression of, as we talked about, you know, next level, right? Um, in terms of, like, we talked about keyboarding skills down below, a little bit, a little bit earlier. But more than anything, like you said, the model has completely changed with library media, it's not what we thought about when we were in high school, or actually when we were in elementary school. That model's changed a lot, like we said, you know, steam, things of that nature, so.
So what, when we eliminated this position before, I assume we had the, um, the, the media specialists years ago.
We did, we had someone in there. She left in like two thousand fifteen-ish, I think, for a different job. And that, at that time is when they kind of switched things up and Doris lowered, went in there. Volunteer to go in there and do the library for a couple years, and they, you know, rearranged teachers from elementary. And then this year was very different, right? So now they haven't been, but they never took that position.
Twenty minutes. So, yeah, and they were a volunteer, but it was twenty minutes when you moved off.
That's what I mean. And then, we're not talking about changing the, the budget, we're not. We're going to find the eleven thousand at some place.
Yeah. We'll leave another area.
Correct.
So is that something we need to have a motion on, or?
We need to approve.
Yes.
We need to approve the change of the position. The only thing that we want to practice through the budget is what existed and, um, replace it.
We will not hire A.D., we will not hire, we'll approve to hire a library media specialist. We don't have to, we don't have to abolish the, you know, no standard, you're not wanting to complete another rating, but we have to, we won't fill it. We have to establish library media specialists, that makes sense?
Right, so we have to take a motion and hire a library media specialist.
Correct.
For the elementary school.
I, I would make that motion in a second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, please. So Nick, we, we've spent a long time, and now I understand the, this whole thing.
Yep.
Um, but we've spent a long time building a financial law. So the right thing to do is for us to approve that eleven thousand dollars to go into the salary. Now. Let me know why you don't want us to.
You have to remember, we're going to have extra on that budget this, next year, because we're going to be moving those people that we don't know yet into that grant, using those grant funds that we don't know what we're doing with. So we're going to have extra.
Stimulus funds, so we're going to have leftover salary.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's no need to change it.
All right, okay.
And as we talked about, we've re, we've reevaluated for a year, see where things are, and then reevaluate this position as well. So really, we've got a kind of solid for four years, I would pretty much say, that makes sense? So, and then we can reevaluate, like, we've got to put a high table after a year, right? And say, okay, is all this really working?
I, I was just trying to be consistent on budget law.
Yep.
Right, I didn't understand what you were saying about, okay, we're going to be moving some of those monies, actually, to grant monies, so that budget isn't going to be real anyway until we figure out what's going on with the sentence.
Okay.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, on all the favor of the library media specialists?
Aye.
Close. Stay. Okay, we'll set that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Come on, Nick, anymore?
Yep. Um, like, our annual increases were pretty much, we tracked a lot of the actions, benefits, and special education costs, minimal here and there, but for the most part, that was our majority of our increases. You know, what's our plan? You know, addition of clubs at, at the high school level, which, you know, we're going to do next year, create an advanced, uh, diploma, we did that the year before, but it's a hole, obviously, because of the situation with COVID, right? So we're going to revamp that again next year. Um, after-school, the real tourie programs. Uh, expand summer enrichment to design, um, a summer camp series. Uh, the mediation program for social emotional support is K-12, use of those stimulus funds. And this is what we're looking to do, you know, we're looking to hire a four-point-five A I S teacher, Matthew L.A., I R A A.D., and increase guidance counselor days, and summer enrichment. And what that allows us to do is focus on that learning loss, right? Also give the social emotional supports that we need, um, as well there. And really kind of have our guiding lesson test, and we've done a great job of this last year, to put an extra focus on that as well. Uh, middle school, we're looking to do the same thing with Matthew L.A., library A.D. Uh, we're going to add the home run program, which has been a new success, versus one, ten more families with the home run program, except for twenty families on the home run program. Um, after-school tutoring, and then summer enrichment, or we're going to rack it up a little bit in terms of giving some services there as well for the summer. And reduce class size, so we go more six-block classes. So if we decide we've got a class that, they have twenty-two kids, and, you know, these are ten, these kids were really struggling, let's really focus on those ten, let's split the class, let's need to get the, the, um, A I S teacher in there with them, let's kind of really drill down to those students and give them the extra time to get these.
Anything?
Yes.
I missed one before you did middle school, can you talk about our plans of possibly having transportation for that year?
For the month, sorry, for the true group? Yes, and we're going to go two days a week tutoring under the school and give the transportation to the students as well. So they don't have to worry about getting a ride home. Um, huge plus, obviously, that's, you know, some of our biggest problems sometimes, because this can't stay. So, and again, that's another thing, you know, when you look at after year one, and say, maybe that's set up for three days, maybe set up for four days, and see what are we turning or investing, I think Scott said that's return on investment at the end. To say, you know, where, where are we going to go with this, and how hard are we advancing here?
Let's work, you know, it's not, uh, uh, a lot yet.
So we've got a pretty open date a little bit here, which is kind of nice, you know, in terms of saying we can pump some, some funds in some other areas, and we can rearrange some things, and they're trying to give us that opening notice. High school A I S math teacher, after-school tutoring, reduce class sizes again with a number of, uh, sections. An addition of a part-time guidance counselor, a couple days a week, so what we're going to, we're going to do is put one day down at the school, one day at the high school. So at each level, we'll get additional counseling support as well. And this is what it kind of breaks down to look like, here's our total for two years. This is what we plan on spending for next year, and this is what we plan on spending the year after. Again, after next year, we reevaluate, see how things are going, and kind of take it from there. There's a third year, and there are two, we'll reevaluate, there's two. You can't put a three-year plan down right now, you got to go one year, two years, and then you can then reevaluate after year one. And you can see, that could change completely, you know, in a year. Um, there is some talk that each, and both of us will not let it lie. Uh, summer school program, they're talking about doing it remotely. Um, something we would have to talk about, I think we've got to get our kids into school, whether it's, you know, you know, whether there's a couple aides overseeing them, um, like getting them into a school setting. Or I'm talking to Amsterdam, because they also want to bring kids back there in the summer as well. Or I'm talking to Amsterdam, because they also want to bring kids back there in the summer as well. Um, so that was just dropped on us yesterday, so we're going to have to see what that looks like. But that's why there's some of these grant funds as well, to, to see what we have to do there. Now, the good thing is, we won't have as much transportation, we won't have as much, we don't have to put an extra unit of us, because it won't be transported. So we can reverse those funds and we can use it for things that we could have. Don't know what it looks like yet, I'm going to have to see what, how it all falls out. I think our summer school kids need to be live someplace. That's what made me struggle in the first place, not being there, I think. Um, and so we want to look at that, uh, type of model. Only five weeks, so we'll see.
Um, can we go to the floor?
Yep.
Um, can we talk about the fact that we have a plan for the stimulus funds additionally as well? It's just not that, we, we don't know the detail of how those funds are going to work, but just like you see on this sheet, we have a breakout for all the rest of the stimulus funds too. And once that gets finalized, then we can finalize that.
The plan is, in end of May, middle May, um, have a community meeting, talk about that plan with everybody. And that's looking to, like we said in the second slide, increase our ERS, right? To about 2.5 million dollars, in a word, 2.5, 2.6 million dollars. Increase our, 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 to the ERS, TRS, 217,000. To increase our equipment reserve to about 400,000. To increase our, um, our capital reserves to 500,000. Plan on having about 250 in there, we get to 500,000, we do a 4 million dollar fund. Uh, so those are the areas to look at, not to mention, we still have pretty heavy funding downs, but we're also looking at things like, we talked about, asking the smart boards, um, also the, uh, the building condition survey. What we can do is create revenue for next year, you know, which is, which is positive, because those are all able expenses. Um, and then looking at even the, uh, we talked about, uh, common areas, cafeteria, redesigning areas, so it's more up-to-date 21st century learning. You know, in, in a room like this, you can see probably, you know, benches and countertops all the way around. This is a little vision, with some high-top areas in here as well, so you can not only use it for the cafeteria, you can also use it for breakout rooms. Outside, in, in the foyer area, some areas where kids can go break out to five or six kids in, in a group. As you know, we got Google meets, right? So all of a sudden, Google meets is, has breakout rooms. So as those kids go on the breakout rooms, the teacher can observe them at these areas while they're doing the work. So we put screen TVs up next to the areas as well, so they can put their work up there and share. So we're looking at trying to redesign the spaces, because what's this going to look like in 2030, right? We don't want it to look the same. So those are the types of things we're looking to do over the next year of our show, and then reevaluate for the rest of that, those funds, move up. Not to mention, we get the pilot programs starting moving, which we'll talk about that, that's where we're going to redesign that money. And now we just have the new influx, some possibility of some money coming down and down kind of flow, so. I think over the next, you know, three or four years, we're positioning ourselves in a very good situation, as long as everything works itself out, so. In closing, uh, we've got to add support to key areas, we'll get the programs for students, we can district this out, we'll try to keep the taxpayer burden to a minimum, we'll develop the plans for the federal stimulus funds, with state donor input. And we're going to put together three budget meetings, only one with the faculty and staff on May 4th. We have our budget community hearing on May 6th, there at 6:00 P.M. And then we have, um, we do a webex once for people who can't enter, you know, who can't come to the, to the meeting on, um, May 10th at 6:00 o'clock on webex. So, and this was our, you know, pretty much line of budget that we, uh, we pretty much approved the, the amount last time, and it's action matters, so. Everything's good to go. We'll put the newsletter out, we'll get that out, so the newsletter is in people's hands seven to ten days prior to the budget vote, which was the issues that we had in the past. We saw it last year, we'll solve even more this year, and, um, we'll get the budget packets out ASAP. So we're, we're kind of ahead of the game there a little bit, so. Make sense?
Okay, any other questions, Al?
The only thing I would say is, because of this last-minute rollout sort of stuff, we normally, once the budget voted on, we're kind of done for finance committee. We still have some things that we can hear that we've got to wrap up still this year.
Without doubt. And as we get through this part, we've got a couple finance committees, uh, the votes on, we'll tie in that community day, you know. This, you know, I think we designed a heck of a plan, so to share that the community, I think, you're very happy with what we decided to do, um, and again, we'll get some different ideas to it, you know. But as we said, it's a good thing we can reevaluate for a year and see where we're at, so. And who knows? I don't know what the model is going to look like this year. It's going to drive really hard for all of our kids back, and, you know, not have that burnout, some want to kiss and, and go to the, right? So. But all set? What's next on the agenda?
We need to just let you know, we need to approve the property tax report.
Yep.
That's included in the budget, uh, presentation. So I can add that to the agenda for Google real quick.
Okay.
Recruitment retention? Next. Correct?
Do you want to vote on the tax report now, or after?
Go ahead, go with tax report, we'll, we'll just wipe a bunch of stuff out of the way right here. How many points?
Seven. Any, any discussion, uh, in favor?
Aye.
Vows? Any question, with the passing? So do we need to, um, go down the property tax report, did you say there?
We just know that, so, yeah.
What else you do?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm, so, yeah. What else? Thanks for the, um, the next key, obviously, agenda would be recruitment, right?
Recruitment retention. Uh, the board of education asked to put together a plan, uh, for, uh, some of our presentations, of what we're going to do, let's face it, in the next two or three years, um, with what's happening, right? Uh, but again, not to, you know, read it again, but, you know, again, it starts with vision, mission, and values. And what's, what are we looking at? Well, as we navigate through the next few years, large number of retirements, as, as we saw this year, right? New positions through the federal stimulus funds. Shift to the educational model and setting, right? There's, you know, we've got to look at different ways to instruct, look at different ways to, to set up our rooms, our environments, that type of stuff. So there's a, a lot to look at, so we want to recruit the teachers and the staff that are going to help us, give us that support to do that. Keep people in places for positions, retention, how do we keep that company staff? So what are we looking at in this recruitment side? Time to post in the law, uh, after we approved last time, the administration sat down, put everything together, put it on the law, got it out, and set a, a trajectory for, uh, first round interviews, second round interviews, final interviews, reference checks, right? So what we're going to plan on doing is, by May 10th and 11th, or, excuse me, May 13th, we're going to, I'm going to meet with the final candidates and say, I'm going to bring this board of education on May 25th for a verbal, um, you know, to work with us. So hopefully, we can secure these people before the interview process and we can start some of these other positions. And you want to tell, the, you know, the worst thing going for job interview, when I was younger, going for positions was, you get the job interview and they say, we'll call you back in a couple of weeks. We're going to go and say, round one today, round twos on next Monday, Tuesday, round three is the superintendent on the 13th of May. You will know my answer by the 14th of May and report to the board of education for a long may from there. So they know when they go over to our job interview, what the outcome is going to be as opposed to other ones, where they might sit and wait for two or three weeks. We're not going to wait for that. We've got the best, we're going to move forward with it, with our checks. So we clear our schedules, we have a calendar, we put everything in place, and I think we're going to move slowly, uh, quickly through that, I guess, is the whole part. What I have in mind. Share it up?
Did the laptop go to sleep?
It did go out. All right. Alright, quite good. So time to post in the law. Um, concession organization, reprocess, and timeline, reaching out to organizations. You know, Mark reached out to some local, uh, excuse me, state organizations, uh, national organizations to reach out and say, you know, we have, we're looking for diverse, uh, you know, candidates, and we want to make sure that we're getting out to as, as many people as we possibly can. So I reached out with some lock, without some lock, we keep reaching out. Um, I'm now moving up a lot of, I'm wholesaling, I'm wholesaling organization, uh, person's ahead of all the internal resources. I think there's a lot of, uh, stepping on our toes in some areas, with different colleges, as opposed to saying, okay, let's pull this together, and, you know, let's make sure we're getting all that information out to all those, um, educational background colleges, sort of thing, though, right? So, so we're not sure if we want to reach out. So I'm waiting to hear back from him, we've got some other things, um, moving in some other colleges as well, so. We have to reach out, getting some contacts, so every year we can do this, right? And to make sure that we're looking at, at, at every, um, candidate, and giving every candidate an opportunity to apply for our position. And, and I think, when we talk about some other things to recruitment here, it's going to help us, I think, entice some people to come here, right? Looking to create a brochure, the school district, the area involvement, uh, department administration outreach. So what the plan is, is once we hire that position, administration's going to reach out, department's going to reach out. So for example, we have a math position, we have a science position. The idea is to get that science, uh, department to start to reach out to that student and say, hey, welcome, congratulations, we'd love to have you come in, do you want to spend the day with us? Get to know you a little bit, and start to reach out, I think. And, you know, you guys can piggyback on it, I think a couple of our new teachers last year really felt awesome because they did that. And I think specifically, imagine if you'd be a L.A. here, right, and they reached out and really helped.
Absolutely, absolutely, and in odd later, I think, just the situation we're in with our seven, twelve, all being together, it just went really nicely to those people reaching out, kind of, you know, building a bond with somebody who wasn't here yet. And I think it, it was difficult for, at least both of our young people, who, uh, who ended up having mentors out there, out there, their own school teachers, they just really built that bond, and they hit the ground running, despite me being in once every four days, along with the district, and so forth, really. Um, this, this idea of having, you know, that day together especially, and, and, and reaching out at times, I think, it is better.
Many young people feel comfortable, right? Want to feel loved, and want to know that they're in a special place. And when they come here, you can hope what happens when they come here. They look at this facility, and they're, you know, in awe of the facility, they accept them, and they should, they'll accept them, you know. Um, new employees, I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Mentors are key. Mentors are key as well. Want to look? Yes, mentors, uh, you know, fitting the right mentors, work with the union for that a little bit, also work with admin and make sure we have the right mentors for, for the person. Actually, group activities. We're going to reach out to local organizations, we're going to put on a brochure, where there's things like to build basketball, where there's things people can do at night in surrounding areas, so they're comfortable with that coming in here, and knowing that it's just not a small rural town, that that's nothing at all. Uh, we want to entice people to know that there's other things going on here. And, you know, what's going on with community revitalization? So I'm working with BOSI's, we have a substance, we, we already have a service that indirectly remained for, that helped us put together our brochure, that, and I use this one because I really like the way they put this together, it's a small district in the university. But if you look at it, it kind of breaks down all the different things, like, you know, academic opportunities, athletic options, a little bit about the district, um, I want to go as far as what about the community, uh, extracurricular activities, like I said, outside, extracurricular activities that we have here. Different pieces on our school, like comments from our students. Comments, like real live comments from our students, someone like Elliot, saying, you know, what was your experience here? So they can really see generally what our district, you know, is like. Obviously, we push through our facilities, and it's a big showcase. And a picture of, you know, what's going to happen soon, right? So we're going to put that together, um, with, uh, BOSI's. Um, and what we'll do is, I'll, I'll send you like the first couple of revisions, take a look at it, and we'll, you know, we'll build it from there. Hopefully for this year, but we'll get a little.
I just had a conversation with Carly about.
Yeah.
The transition coming from Long Island, you know. And she said, you know, it wasn't until just recently that we realized that if anything has consequence. So, I mean, we take for granted what people coming from totally different areas needs to learn, right? All means of not to skip away, you know, and there's everything you want there, right? So I, I think this is really critical for, for those.
Yeah. Uh, new employees on our, we did this last year, and we begin this year. Ten o'clock, meet and greet, we give all the admin, this is official food service, facilities, board of education president, um, pretty much all the administration together, and we introduce everybody. I was like, everybody, you know, the department chair, that position, uh, and, you know, who they are, and what, what they do in the positions. Uh, then we meet with, uh, head over the benefits, um, we talk to, uh, Chris and I T about the technology piece, and then we get the swipe of passes, key phone set. We take a bus ride, uh, you know, clear around our community, so our, so our, our, our new hierarchy sees what, what, you know, what's out there, and where our students live. Um, so when you took our group last year on a bus ride, we come back here for lunch. Uh, we do a little bit of conscious discipline, recorded practices, talk about how we handle, you know, discipline, what we do here. And then they have time to meet, to build an administrative, to see their classroom. So it's enough today, we don't want it to be an eight or nine-hour activity, or completely, you know, shot wasted for the day, four or five hours of lunch in there, and it gives everybody an opportunity to meet, greet everybody, and see everyone. And make them feel special, make them feel special. Uh, and by then, I hope to have the brochure ready as well, we hand that out to them as well. And in the future, if we hire them, we'll hand that out. And, you know, obviously, we, we really have to talk about this, you know, this has been signed, it's been, it's moving forward. Um, the other company put their purchase order in for the, uh, for the departments and the retail. So this is moving, and this is moving in a pretty fast, uh, way. Next Tuesday, we're going to have a meeting here with the owners and, and the, uh, and the, uh, executive director of Montgomery County, the person in charge of economic development. We're going to have a meeting here at, uh, 12:00, 11:00 o'clock on Tuesday, to get to know each other, and to show how much we want to be involved in the process, you know, all the way through, so. There's very encouraging stuff going on, so. And we want to showcase that, we want to push that out, hmm? How do we retain our employees? Benefits, very great benefits here, you know, our, our benefits are, are outstanding, and some of the best healthcare benefits, you know, out there. Um, working environment, great working environment, people helping each other, people going the other way, our kids are outstanding. The best part of my behavioral support is going to technical check every morning. To see the kids, have fun, connect, are just great kids. There's a little girl who doesn't speak too much, very, very, um, she's very, uh, shy. Every day she brings a new stuffed animal to me, just to have a conversation and talk. But those are the type of kids that we have, and the kids who are, who are genuine, reach out and talk to you. I say, Elliot, I'm always, there's a conversation we can have. It doesn't feel like there's a, there's a, how do I say, oh, there's a superintendent. She feels comfortable talking to me, I feel comfortable talking to her, and I think we want to showcase that, and, and show how many great kids that we do have here. And, you know, it's not low and slow, but that is true. We have some really well-rounded students, who love what they have here, they pride in it, and it shows. Uh, again, the intention is the mentors. You know, creating that relationship again, making sure that they stay strong with their mentors and their department chairs. Professional development, as we move to a new age of instruction, we want to provide the best professional development for that, right? We want to showcase what we're doing in the future. Um, staying ahead of the ship, technology, instruction, and facilities, right? As we're constantly updating, we reset common areas or are building, uh, projects. Our technology has, and how we're doing, you know, how we're providing instruction. Collaboration, do a great job here of collaborating in terms of, uh, teams, committees. This is stuff that Alicia's on down in elementary school, for example, meeting with each regular team this year, numerous times, to collaborate to make sure that everybody's on the same page, getting their goals across as well. That's just one example. Consistency, policy programs and administration, what's consistent here, the things that we do day in and day out. And know that they're being heard, and know that they're getting responses. You know, I take great pride, as well as my administration does, giving back to people within 24 or 48 hours, making sure they get the answers that they need or commit to have an conversation. That's extremely important. And growth opportunities, what's growth opportunities mean, well? You know, we might be looking at a merger, you know, sometime, come, those are growth opportunities. Department chair opportunities, right, that are here. Uh, coaching opportunities, uh, clubs and activities. And community revitalization, and we talked about that again, it's extremely important that we really reach out and say, you can now stay here, grow here, and, and live here, and significant other people may get a job a little bit too, and stay here, and build, you know, have a beautiful house in situations like, so. You know, a lot of good things going on, and, um, continue to grow, grow retention in, in our plan, but we have a good plan in place, uh, in, in terms of hiring, so. Any questions?
I would, I would say that that was able to be done before.
That was what?
That was able to be done before.
Yeah.
We, we don't need the downtown revitalization for families to be able to work here, so.
Right. But it's nice to have, right? But it's nice to have, right?
It's a very splitting thing right here in New York.
Yeah.
And personally, I think that it is a shame that this is the best that they could do for what happened with the past move to Florida and the missed opportunities that happened.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
I feel like our talent's been muted, you think.
Has it won, sorry?
Muted, you think.
Oh. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you. We're sent high. Can I just talk about the standard?
All right. Great, we're brought into next generation learning standards. We have had multiple presentations on the standards we've been talking about since twenty seventeen. And now we are ready to implement them, same with information, that's okay. So as we went over, in fact, we went over our vision, vision, mission, and values. Our big thing that I would like to point out is that one thing that the next generation learning standards do is they really focus on lifelong learning. Their practices all go into how can we ensure that students are lifelong readers, writers, math teachers, and so on. So that is a big focus of these standards. It's important to point out that Common Core standards, when they were dropped on us X number of years ago, it was kind of overnight. These standards have been vetted through how the committees, teachers, families, staff, people at the state level, local level, so we took a lot more thought when it's these standards, and it's reflected in what we have presented to us now. So, as I said, we have been talking about these standards since twenty seventeen. Since that time, we have worked at raising awareness, we sent a group of teachers that were attached to be our next gen leaders in the district. They were the teachers in math, ELA, special ed, AIS. Really open and took a look at these standards and then brought that back and it's in turn featured for our staff here. Phase two, this is where we are now, which is a building capacity phase. We should have been at the end of this date in June, but the state has just recently come out and said, hey, we're gonna take another year off from, before implementing. So we do have another year of building capacity. But we've been preparing all year, so we're ready to start in September, so we are on track. Phase two, what we key there is it'd be a really tap our department chairs, both at the secondary level and at the elementary level. So our department chairs have been fantastic in helping to lead the conversation, lead the review of the Common Core and other change to next generation standards. So that has been fantastic. So now, it's due, but as of now, full implementation will not start in this September, but the fall, twenty twenty-two. And at that point, in the spring of that year, that's when our, our state assessments in grade three through eight will transition to the next generation learning standards. From the following year, those standards will, then be reflected in the reading exams in algebra. That would be in June twenty twenty-four. The following year, we get geometry, and the year after that, it would hit the ELA eleven exam, and then the algebra two. So there is a step-by-step implementation of the exams and how that will roll back to our students. So what are some of the major differences that, these are just the highlights, there are several differences, but these are the most important differences between the Common Core and the next generation learning standards. The first line, getting for all the ELA teachers, and I bet Jen will say this as well. The Common Core learning standards, we had literary, nonfiction, text standards and kind of literary test standards. And there are two totally different standards, it was very cumbersome, cumbersome work to go through, they have combined. Okay, suppose they're not combined, so they're one set of standards. They've also provided text complexity guidance. I remember maybe the teacher wouldn't come to court first, we know. We didn't know what's the text that we should be reading, what level are these tests? They are now providing that guidance, so each grade level know where the benchmark needs to be for those students. We use our paper standards, so they would have combined information in literary standards. They did reduce the number of them, they just made them a little bit more concrete and in-depth. The writing standards are now user-friendly, we clarified it's a great field, I'll talk a little bit about how we are implementing that district body in a few minutes. And again, as I said, the real focus is like on practices of readers and writers, okay? So really, we're pursuing to improve their writing, their reading skills, that's beyond just them being prepared for this task, but how can we then apply those to the future? So that's all the big shift in the ELA standards. For the math standards, there is some movement, clarification, come on, break up. So some of the standards have adjusted, where they are being adjusted in whether in a course, like algebra one, geometry, algebra two, as well as in like middle school, middle school, they've changed where they expect students to learn the density probability and statistics. There have been quite a few adjustments in the algebra standards, so whether it's the algebra one or algebra two. High school levels, this is by course, we're not going back to the time period where we got course one, two, or three, there's still algebra one, geometry, and algebra two. There are explore standards, these are very cool, especially looking at an elementary level, the explore standards. Are standards that a third grader might dabble with, they might be exposed to, but that's not what they're expected to have mastered. Okay, so these standards help, help a little bit with the differentiation for our teachers, okay? A student has a match with these concepts, let's explore what, what could be an advanced level of those standards. There's also the plus standards. The plus standards are for your advanced courses, okay? So you might be looking at the advanced, if you're a seventh grade student, you have this advanced track. These standards would be the ones that you would also master beyond just the traditional standards for seventh grade. There's also a verb glossary, which our sheriff's house, who is one of our elementary, department chair in math is a huge hand up, because this helps make consistent use of verbiage across all of the classrooms, okay, all grade levels. So if we're using the word compare, this is what they specifically want you to be doing, okay? So that's one of the big changes when it comes to the next gen math standards.
You said there was a reduction, what's the magnitude of the reduction in standards?
Like eighty. You know, like we might have gone from like thirty to twenty-six, something like that. So it's not like massive, but at the same time, it is more condensed and they focus on, they really have prioritized standards as opposed to let's do all of this, they're trying to prioritize what they feel is the most revitalized again. So where are we? We have been preparing for years and years to start work in the next generation standards. We're about right here. We've been following this path. We have started raising awareness, organizing, looking at crosswalks and pattern theater. For the most part, all of our areas are at their capacity standing, we are just taking a look, making sure we have our resources in place. Math, for example, at the elementary level, we're trying, we are adjusting our math test to make sure that it is the best test to be needing these standards. So we're at the point where we truly are ready to dive in, like they pull all of our department chairs. Majority of, pretty much eighty percent says everybody's got them, we're the second. The ones who are a little bit, who read a little bit more are those math classes that are at higher level. So algebra, like geometry, algebra two, basically, so are some of the words out for those. Yes.
I'm assuming there's a middle comment down below, down below. It says I can articulate when it's different.
Yes.
And the question I have is, I certainly appreciate the more sensible rollout of this.
Right.
And I understand some of the things you talked about, lifelong learners and all that. But I'm just wondering, you know, from an educational point of view, how is this, this total package really changing in any way? The way we're educating or addressing our students? In terms of, you know, their ability to do critical thinking and to, you know, to master concept of lifelong learning?
That's.
A lot of this is kind of technical, but that's kind of.
Absolutely. So one of the main components that I would appreciate is that they are embedding literary, literacy standards and literacy expectations in all curriculums now, okay? So that's one thing. How can you, you're given a passage, you're given a text, how are you dissecting that? And then pulling information from it, that's becoming, so in social studies standards, our science standards, math standards, they all have a literacy component in them. Because that's the thing we do is reading. Everything we do is pulling out this information, and then applying it. Another thing that they've done is they've taken the literacy, the writing component is huge across all curriculums now. Also in math, making sure that you are, here's the information, now I'm gonna write about it, I'm gonna show that I understand that, and I'm applying it. So that's, those are some components that are changed. One of the nice things that they did by condensing the number of standards is that you really can dive into them more. Under the Common Core standards, we're kind of just, you know, trying to get off them, we weren't really diving deep into any of them. This does provide the opportunity to dive a little bit deeper into whether the theme, whether the determining, or comparing tracks, or whatever it might be. You have the opportunity to dive a little bit deeper than what we were able to do under Common Core. So they kind of just made it make more sense, I would say.
And I hope to get that up, I hope that the commission stays much longer than other commissioners.
Yeah.
Coming from the leading base, and actually that she gets this, this is, this can't happen tonight. Can't shut without anyone's door, and I think she's very good. And she's leading it right now in a good way, and she's kind of being left alone, that can happen in a while, so that's a good thing to do, so.
No, absolutely. The standards really, like, we've lacked a little bit, and it's the ELA department, so they're like, there's really not a huge change. It's just actually limiting the craziness and all the abstract noise in those standards, and really helping us focus. So it really is narrowing it down quite a bit for us. So ELA in particular, I don't know, Jada, can you see the same thing? Not a huge change, it just simplified it, makes it more, more sense for the students and the community. So what are we doing in ELA? So we have the, we have morning plans, some curriculum writing, curriculum work guided into obtaining materials. Those are already scheduled for the spring and summer. We did a lot of work at the March Superman Conference Day with departments, making sure that they're guiding and looking at these, at these standards. What is our next step? We have another year, so let's get really, really good at this. Elementary, their big focus is looking at how to strategically and explicitly teach the problems in the same way across all grade levels. So it's a common language for our, for all the students. One of the help that we have about is our mother series that is consistent, pay through K, pre-yes, it's like, yeah? Yeah, that we know, we use for people. But K through five, so that would be about there. Piling the necessary materials, if you remember, I said before, we had to look at text complexity. That we wanna make sure that our, the texts that we are using are paired correctly to the necessary complexity levels that they've given us. A big one, and one of the tire task force just said that we need to this, is making sure that we have a district-wide writing procedure. All right, we've been using the race strategy, and that is our elementary, teachers have found great success. We started with the race strategy at pre-K, I went and observed, they were doing the the restating, it was all verbal, but it was restating just as we would do with the race strategy for all of once you have first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, and twelfth, so it was very cool to see, it's very consistent, the languages are saying. The secondary level, we're preparing again, making sure that they're pulling texts that are appropriate. And then focus is also being put on the writing. So our writing committee that we have over the summer includes our ELA chairs and social sites.
Is there any focus at all on oral speaking skills?
So the race strategies that we're looking at, do incorporate, that's our first step, is teaching them how to properly answer a question, restating that question, providing evidence. Those are embedded in them, and we're trying to help the students transfer, because there's often a mental block when it comes to the writing. We go, I don't know how to take from here to the paper. So we really are starting with how do we verbally say or answer a question? And then how can we then transfer that to our writing? Okay, so there is, there is a component of that, yes.
Were you asking about your, in terms of being able to do presentations and oral, that's what I was.
Yeah, that is, those presentations, those hands-on learning, that has become huge, especially at the, at the high school level. I know I've been watching several presentations that I've provided to students so that they are practicing those skills. Imagine you've done quite a few of them.
Oh, so much.
Yeah. That's good for math. The team, we're focusing on those people, that's a big thing for the elementary school. We have a math series, we are trying to take that math series, and certainly sell that series right at K, they can give you as many different ways to solve problems as possible. Our math series are what's best for our students and people consistent. So the math department will be working on that. They're also working, especially the elementary, working to collaborate with the science department. So how can we do those hands-on skills, the measurement skills, geometry skills? And how can we embed those in to prosper through work? The secondary, they are looking at those adjustments, again, when it comes to the algebra and geometry, how those are adjustments can be, they work with them in the coming year. All right, science learning standards, we are also changing, these are not, this is a preview of what's coming. These were that in twenty sixteen. We are still in the implementation and sustainability, the science department has been on this, under the leadership of this prime. They're, they're, they're ready to go, this is also gonna push back another year. So those are in twenty, September twenty twenty-three. That will be starting in the middle, impact all the other exams. At the high school of our traditional biology, earth science, chemistry, and physics. The, in the past, our science, three through eight exams have been given at grades four and eight. That will be changed to grades five and eight in twenty twenty-four. Okay, so those will be changed up a bit, and the science department is continuing to work on that. There are also new standards coming out in the arts. Our art department has been working on last Superman Conference Day, going back curriculum around those new standards. Many of them are, they've been doing it for years now, so they are ready to roll. Languages other than English just got dropped right before our March Superman Conference Day. And then computer science and digital literacy standards, they, I know that Ron Goldman and Timmy Johnson have been working on on building curriculums, how they are embedding those standards into all the work that they do with all the curriculums. So those are upcoming. So that is the brief history of us, and where we're going, and why we're going. Any questions?
I have a couple more, just to, one of the big criticisms of the Common Core standards is that there was not a lot of educator influence in their development. So that was one question about how this is developed, it was different. And the other is, what kind of basis do they have to say that this will be a successful approach to education versus the catastrophe? They have decided to roll out.
Well, one is volume, and I think there's a lot more to your volume, I think these make a lot more sense. But it's, we're gonna have to roll this, see how, and see how it goes. So far, I can say that we've implemented a variety of things already within our district, and it's been successful. So I think we're on the right track. I do like the way that there's a lot of cross-curricular work, and there's a lot of focus on reading and writing. And I think that, again, for lifelong, getting you prepared for the college level and then career's in the future.
Remember that in education, every class, you need to change everything anyway. And it's oftentimes not changing everything, it's just rewording it.
Yeah, it's rewording it.
Or condensing it like this does, or expanding it because they feel the need to do that. It's, that's what it is.
Yes.
The arts, what years in school does that cover?
This covers the standards K through twelve. So it does cover all the way through.
And same question for languages?
Languages right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bettina, but I believe they are impacting just the traditional, like, level one, which we provide in seventh and eighth grade, so level one and then the high school.
I believe, I believe the low standards are actually open for comment right now, I don't even think they're perfectly finalized. And this is the first update to the low standards in twenty seventeen.
Yes, in a very long time.
I believe the low standards from right now are from nineteen ninety-six or ninety-four, so it's.
They're also offering more of a focus, they want to provide more of the traditionally standard exams in one level, which is.
I know we talked about this in another board meeting, but I would really encourage us as a district to be looking at how languages other than English earlier in the education process, because our graduates are gonna need it to get employed honestly. And then my last question is on computer science, digital literacy. How are we approaching that as a district? Are we approaching it by embedding it in all of our curriculum? Or are we approaching that in some other fashion?
Good question. Right now, we're at the point where Mr. Johnson and Goldman are diving into it and seeing how we can best embed it within our library media areas. But what's a positive, and what will also be a positive, if we were to find our last point of mental health, is having that and that work embedded throughout all our, all of our curriculums throughout the district. So it's kind of at the point now where we're diving in, we're kind of dissecting it, to see how we can best embed that within our curriculum across the world.
But that's another thing that I think if you look at the success of our graduates, right? The more we embed that, the more that's the more driven.
Yes, sir.
And have to operate effectively, and so I think that benefits our students, the more we can do that.
Right now, our, because of more and it's in these work, they do, do a lot of cross-curricular work with teachers, science, social studies now. They are embedding a lot of that currently. So a lot of these standards, based on what I've seen briefly, we are embedding across, it would be really nice to see them do that in the general, the right. Any questions?
Hi, thank you very much. I'm waiting, people turn their phone over. Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is new business. Why not cargo?
Yeah, do business. Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm.
Okay, first up is bus camera system.
So as we were looking at, you know, bus camera system, beginning of the year, you're looking at twice, Wayne's over here, right? Looking at twice, looking at different opportunities, didn't know where we were, you know, with those, financially, anything else. So Wayne came to me, I wanna say, a week back, right? Said, now you've placed out everything to see where to come back at, and what we can do with our current camera system. Correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, you can kind of be, be obviously a big part of the thought behind this, but. Right now, we gotta take, if something happens on a bus, we gotta take that old cartridge out, right? Pretty much send it over to an administrator for, to view it, that type of stuff. A new system or an updated system allows us to share a file, or to, you know, send it to the email, to that nature, or put it in a folder. Not to mention a better resolution camera, and a lower overall price over the years, to put new cameras into the bus, into the buses, is that correct? And I think a lot of that, again, correct me if I'm wrong, is the competition that's happened in the last three or four years, with companies coming into this, has really lowered that price, where you couldn't touch it probably three or four years ago. Am I correct in that assumption?
Um, yeah, that's true.
Yep.
Wait, could you come in a little closer?
So he put together a. Now, a couple things, he, he put together something, you know, we're, we're a different situation than we were beginning of the year to the end of the year in a couple ways, in terms of Wayne's budget, for example. And again, I'm not, this is like the honest thing, I'm not saying we have to do something like this, I just want to present it to you, and you can make a choice to see what we want to do for, but. Wayne's budget, for example, and Leah, again, if you correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, not as many trips, not as much maintenance items, am I correct in that?
Yeah, and the big item that we had budgeted was the contract trans. We had seventy thousand in there, and we have not used barely any of that, we've only spent four thousand. So we have a lot of money sitting there. And obviously, whatever we spend this year is what we get next year. We already budget based on the state aid directions for transportation for next year. So they've already based that money on what they think we're gonna spend on this budget, so the more it's off that we don't spend, then it's gonna be that much less that we don't get next year, that we're already going to do it for.
I'll say, they put you, you know, if you start doing that revenue-based expense, you know, you start counting on that every year. And again, I'm not saying this is what we have to do, but it's just the way it fell this year. So Wayne put together, you know, I put this script, the, the amounts that you put in there, the first two pages, or the sheet that you gave me, and it just broke down what it would cost to put the cameras in every bus, what it would cost to put new cameras in each year, or transfer them to new buses, and then what it would cost to now get a warranty for years five through ten, correct? So now we have warranties for ten years with them, and the service agreement and everything. Probably not with the, with the cameras, if something goes down, you know, on the service agreement, that's really sticky with the price. This would allow us to have a warranty, as well as a guarantee for the first five years, right? And then the next five years, we would warranty them. So if you look at the breakdown, after that time, it's still cheaper than we're paying now, overall, for the, for the cameras. With a newer higher resolution camera, and the ability to share files, things of that nature.
So we have money in our budget, is that?
It is there, yes. Because of the financial situation of not spending everything, because now we're getting to the end of the year, so. You know how we say, here's our fund balance this year, because we just didn't spend anything this year, you know, in our accounts? The, the thing that we want to look at for technology, transportation, and things like that, is it gives us the ability to get that money back next year, and keep getting paid on that, on those funds. So, just something I want to bring to the board, and see if we want to move on that, because of the impact that it does for us financially, and the impact that it will do for us with the bus in the future. You mind, what did I miss?
Have you shared any of the stuff I need?
Yeah, the first two pages, yep, they have all that.
They have, okay.
Yep, the breakdown, the costs, the company, all that.
No, the labor is actually too long, but hopefully we all will be able to be able to survey all the systems, particularly in our world today. I've gone with my inherited, you know, part that we have for decades, and that is a basic recorder with a hard drive, you know, looks, just one air problem, looks like this, plugged in. I physically have it unlocked, you would have to take this thing out, tend to record to the offices. It becomes a little bit slummy sometimes, it's not the end of the world, however, you know, a lot of time is science invested, so possibly Chris might call me up and say, you know, he needs a hard drive from bus four, and bus four is on a bus, right? He won't be back until one thirty, or, or they're on a field trip, or something like that. So this downloading, this Wi-Fi downloading ability, granted, the bus has to be in VR for me to do it. However, if I time that correctly, then we can have that footage. I can send it to Chris via email, he can view the thing, he can erase it, he can do whatever he has to do with it. I believe it's also stored on a small SD card, which is a much better option, so if you have to save an incident, for instance, or, I don't know, legal reasons, or whatever, it's going to be stored on a small unit, there's a fraction of the cost of this thing. So I've got many of these in the bag, and when you replace them, it's two hundred, two hundred fifty, three hundred dollars for rebuilding, not a brand one, so they're not cheap. And so, there's that part of it, so unfortunately, when I come and stand before you, it always has to do with dollar signs. And that's what Dr. Fitzgerald was referring to, there's an upfront cost. And if you share that, I believe you'll see, I think, what I did was, through all the purveyors of camera systems, that seemed to be interesting in our school, and dealing with us, and put together the cost factors, and tried to compare them apples to apples. As now as possible, a hundred percent of this, you know, they have different offerings. The other thing I was kind of hoping at was, how to, so we have this money in the budget, how to be able to recoup that money, or reduce going forward, what we have to spend for your, in our annual budget? And unfortunately, a lot of the purveyors are using copies, storage systems, which come at a price of fees, annual fees. And so the present system that we have, two, four, seven, they have their own system. And at first I was looking outside of them, because I felt we kind of had an inferior product. But when I started investigating, I realized that the problem was not the company, but rather the simplicity of package that we had obtained from that whole few years. So, I don't want to put you all to sleep, because I kind of came out of the agenda late here, but. But the thing is, though, it would allow us, using this company, that we presently have, building on it, it would allow us to be able to utilize the systems that we already have in the buses. We would have to add even up to each bus, in order to make it Wi-Fi compatible. And then we need that ten thousand dollars for the Wi-Fi system itself, for the server, access points, whatever it takes to be able to transmit, have the bus converse with my computer, and then pass it on to the rest of the staff. So, I skipped over two things, but it absolutely gives us basis and justification for discipline, when we have a system in place, protects and honors our staff in some situations. Some situations, it gives me the ability to provide accountability, and training opportunities for the staff as well. And I think that being able to download something on the spot easier would give me more opportunities to be in those positions, in that position where we need to be able to do those tasks.
And we're talking higher resolution cameras, is that correct?
Correct, and, and speaking about the other staff, we have a problem, say, on the floor, and it seems to be a serious problem, or an ongoing problem, or something, you know, a principal wants to check in immediately, and to see, you know, how, how's it going? You know, how's the bus driver feeling in the situation, has his behavior improved? Things like that. Then calling up on the spot, and sending it to him, and they're able to monitor, rather than, you know, we're like, sometimes we manage the bottom, you know, we're trying to keep all those balls in the air, but if you have to go and to manage this way, it would be, it would be very difficult. Yes?
So if I understand you correctly, what you're proposing here is that you change the system from in-bus hard drive system to a downloadable, intermittent-based system? Is that correct?
Yes.
And as a part of that, it operates the camera quality on every bus?
Camera quality, not necessarily. If you have what, Dr. Fitzgerald shared, you'll notice that we're going to have to replace the camera in this year's buses, the ones that come in. And that's because for some reason, and you don't know why, we've had PhDs, all of them, their high-definition cameras, post-standard drives, we've had for years and years. However, there was this one vintage of buses that Harold had, put through a standard drive. So they're, they're lower quality.
Okay, so that's enough.
So I need to do that, but this system, I don't necessarily think is going to improve. All of you cameras, got it?
So it's, the, the camera replacement is just a set of buses because of the sequencing of those particular cameras?
Correct.
So then the, the next goal will happen, which is we will put the buses over, correct? We will input the cameras?
About pictures. When I, when I said, looking down the road, hopefully not having to increase that what you're flying on it, in fact, it should be a little bit lower than the line, I don't know. Moving forward.
What do you mean, they're gonna lock in price for the new cameras that we, we use on buses three years from now?
No, the plan is that we replace them over five years, when the buses replace, brand new system, which is to the tune of, uh, so, for three buses, it's to the tune of ninety-four hundred dollars.
Correct.
So my thought was, why not extend that expected life to ten years? At the sixth year, put on a, what they call a service.
Contract.
Contract, right. So the thing would be, you know, it's no longer under warranty, or if it's in a service contract, they're going to need to provide parts and fix the thing, or the like, of that service point.
So the first thing I said is correct, and then the second component of your proposal is that we do this service contract that avoids upfront purchasing for new buses for a longer period of time?
Sure, yeah, I guess, to ten years' cost.
And reduce the principal, and reduce possible expenses, because they're gonna cover all the costs, right? Right, because of the service contract.
Right, right.
For repairs.
Now, a cost to transfer, I think it's a little under six hundred dollars.
Yeah, I remember there was, I'm not a transition. But a thousand less than what we could transfer now.
Right. Um, last question, we don't, we don't have great internet throughout our, our bussing community at this point in all places, so how long do these cameras, first, how does it work when they're not, you know, Wi-Fi? Where is it recorded? And how much recording can occur if there is no internet connection, and that sort of stuff?
That's where the SD card, I think, is, is in place for that purpose, when it's outside of Wi-Fi connection. So this thing here, I think that, I don't remember the hours, I think we can go back, on average, bus company can go back about eight, nine days, something like that. And my, my guess is the SD card will do the same thing.
It does, it sinks, my heart.
But.
It does, yes.
That's where I'm going with, in theory.
I know, exactly, yeah, so it's, it saves on the SD card, and it sinks when it finds wireless capability. But, yep, how would that, oh, yeah.
And the bus has to be in VR, near VR, to do that. So, you know, it's not.
So in theory, it would sink every day, so we would be in no jeopardy of actually losing the recording, right? Because you have that SD card.
Correct.
That might represent things, the SD card should be cleared, and then with several days worth of it. So in theory, we should not do any of that.
Correct.
And because it's Wi-Fi, you get automatically updates in bug fixes and things.
Correct.
You don't have to update it on the web, which is.
Yes.
Yep. And the transferability of the file, being an administrator, being a principal.
Yeah, because of the Wi-Fi.
Yeah, if you had some fight, or something happened, and like you said, dog, the way the bus is, it's been high, and it hits it.
So means that we, the stuff to press is just.
Transfer it.
You just want to get a watch on it.
That needs to still happen, though, because of the yard, that, that.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. But I, I was trying to understand the whole macro piece, what the clause was and everything, I, I got that here.
And the other thing to remember is, we, we had an incident, a new X that we regulated, you get performance from those tapes, so just giving them the tools to be able to do that regularly, so.
Yeah, this is an extra direction, and it was gonna happen, but you remember, two and a half months ago, we didn't even know where we were. You know, we'd stayed eight, we took federal funding, and, you know, he was starting to look at this, but it wasn't the prices were coming. but it wasn't, the prices weren't coming back. And then when he came back to me a couple of weeks ago, or a week and a half, he was telling us, here's the prices. So jeez, this is, this has been cheaper over ten years than we're currently doing, so...
And the big difference is, it's stretching out the, the logistics of, of you. I mean, we want to stay at a five-year plan, and we don't, we all know how fast technology moves.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe you feel that's a bad plan and you want to then to, uh...
Well, we can actually read that every five years.
Listen every five years. However, uh, my thought was, uh, and then in a few, like, discussions, my thinking was, why not? Then the change now, and then now we, through the years, you know, actually pay back what we invested in it if we push out a large piece.
But, but if we do this, we don't need to make that decision until five years from now, correct?
Correct.
Is that true, or do they want us to upfront pay for the maintenance contract now for five years from now?
Uh, maintenance contract on the individual bus cameras?
Yes.
Uh, and what I understood, talking to the salesman, uh, and that sixth year, there's no reason why we can't add it on those for tape, right?
Okay. So then, Leah, how much is our budget underspent by for this year for transportation?
Well, just in that total alone, there's fifty-five thousand.
So if we're looking at this for budgeting whole for next year, is there something else we should be doing for transportation? We obviously have a shortage of vans, for example.
We already approved that.
But what we're saying is, if, if we have seventy thousand dollars to spend, we're going to use thirty thousand on the table that we now won't be able to store next year.
Right.
Is there another expense that we do?
That's exactly what I was saying.
Sweeper, yeah.
Sweeper?
Yeah.
Does that count for transportation? Is that eligible for transportation?
Yes.
It's definitely true.
Because it's a transportation part.
Right.
That's a... And is that to, like, sweep the gravel and stuff off the...
What is it, what is that for?
Also, like, the pavement and stuff, is that what it is?
Uh, mostly inside, uh, we don't do the pavement.
So why can't we approve this?
One may have now, and the house. One may have now. One may have now, and the house, so... We could purchase that too and make up the difference. And then, like you talk about, that's not how I'm going to future, right? Or does that, we stretch the... So we, we can spend for the end of the fiscal year forever. So, um, I, I agree with what you're saying, I just wanted to make sure we had support of this, right? So I, I think that's a great idea, we just approve this now and we ask for recommendation on how else would we spend this money so that we can make that determination in this budget year?
Yes.
Like, between, between the cameras and sweeper, you know, there's fifty. Well, you might decide that when you go back, the sweeper's not the best thing, right?
Yep.
What I call, they told me to make a motion that we go, go ahead and do the camera, do the new system, I think. Yes?
Yes.
Second?
I'm on it, second.
Thank you, Wayne.
Okay, and any further discussion or ideas?
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you.
I don't get too many opportunities, we always tell Gary, I, I gotta listen, Wayne's here. Uh, I, I can't keep saying this enough, Wayne, and this stuff you've dealt with this year for us again, second bus runs, remote days, substitutes, uh, extra bus runs outside of the district. Um, there was times where we were downloading, what, six drivers in a day?
Yeah.
Six hundred drivers in a day, and he's never called me and said he can't on the buses. It didn't, yeah, this stuff just does not happen. Uh, people who are just canceling buses because they can't do it, and he's dealt with everything possible. And, and the school district is very tough, and any school district's tough to get drivers, since it's got substitutes, it's got people ready, I'm hardly going to Gary in that. So outstanding doubt, I mean, yeah, really, can't say that, really outstanding.
Okay, move on?
Yes.
Okay, so the next thing is about vaccination data. Uh, I participated in a, uh, lobby, virtual lobby in the municipal day, and it was around one specific new piece of legislation, uh, which you have the, the attachment for on this point. And what has to do with is, at this point, and, you know, I think Dick has talked about it a number of times, um, it's very cumbersome to vaccinate our kids. Because each, we're required to record each vaccination. We have to download each child's records, input the, what, you know, when and where they were vaccinated, and then upload it individually for each student. This requires a lot of time and effort on part of our nursing, uh, people, and it takes away from the time they have available to deal with student issues and problems. So this bill has been introduced, uh, in the state senate and, and assembly that would allow sort of mass uploading of information. You know, what you say, these kids were all vaccinated, boom, it goes into their individual file. It would take very little time to do it, and it would stake a lot of, uh, effort and, and, uh, burden on our nursing staff. Um, it's already passed through the health committee of both the state and the state assembly, and, uh, that was really the issue that we were talking to the legislators about today. And, uh, there hasn't been a lot of resistance to it at some, at this point. And hopefully, this will be, um, implement, you know, passed this legislative session so that, uh, as we get more and more of our students vaccinated, it will be less and less onerous to our school district to, to be able to upload the information, which is important to do, but it's just like archaic, the way it's going on.
Can I believe this is a different? It, it's, it's, you would think of the example of name, some information, download it, it's decoding it.
It's like a process that brings us able to...
It, it's, it's my fault. We had to do that, you know, the testing we did with four, fifty people, you wouldn't believe how much that...
So anyhow, if, if this does pass, it would be basically not a big deal. You just download the bulk data and the code where it needs to be, and you can double it. And so it would be a big, a huge tool for all districts. There were a lot of different districts represented today, and all of them were just saying the same kind of thing to you all. And especially in some districts like those, the, uh, Ithaca school district, they got five thousand kids. I mean, you know, you just can't imagine what that would involve if you start seriously vaccinating them. So, uh, you know, there's, so far, there does not seem to be much resistance at all at the state level to this going through, and so I just wanted to, you know, update you on it, and I was really happy to hear that this was actually, um, existing and, and moving forward. So hopefully, within the next month or so, we will have, we'll have a big change in the way that data is handled. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, and, uh, it just came up today, obviously, so I... Okay, um, any questions? Okay. And the last thing is, um, do you have meeting dates?
The Q's put together a retirement party, and the only date that you could get for the facility was June tenth, because there's so many people coming in, working now for events.
Oh, it's the tenth.
So our, our board meeting, right, was the tenth?
Yeah.
So they asked us if we could, obviously, move that, because we, you know, we want board members there, so... Is there something we can do on June fifteenth or sixteenth?
Fifteenth works for me.
I'm sorry?
Fifteenth works for me, not sixteen.
How's fifteen people?
Fifteen or sixteen.
You can't, cannot?
Fifteen's good.
Good? Okay, all righty?
Yep.
Good? Stop?
Fifteen should be...
Okay, so we just started moving to the fifteenth. First meeting in June, and the third meeting... Okay, the other thing, uh, again, it's not a general, I'll just mention it a little briefly. I have contact, uh, you know, that group about the superintendent evaluation, so we should be getting the information about that. And by, by the, um, main meeting, we should be able to perform on that. So is there anything else?
There is a question, and...
One?
Ready?
So we have a meeting on the sixth, right?
Six, yes. Twenty-third is our next, uh, sixth and the twenty-third.
Sixth and twenty-third.
Yep, sixth is the, um, budget for the patient.
Yep.
At six o'clock, and the two candidates are running for a vacation, and then, uh, we'll have our meeting right after.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to go home.
Yes, yeah.
All right.